Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Spokane City Council Legislative Session for this evening. If you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Fister, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, we have a scheduled poetry at the podium, but I'm not sure if the poet is here. Mokev Wildflower. Not seeing Mokev. The poem is Tracked Housing. Hopefully, we'll reschedule them with Spokane Arts. We do have some proclamations, and the first is Mental Health Awareness Month. Councilmember Kinnear, and accepting is Dr. Velazquez, Director of the Spokane Region— not Director, excuse me—Health Officer of the Spokane Regional Health.
Is he here?
Yes, he is. He's right there.
Oh, come on up.
Down to the podium, Dr. V.
Welcome. Whereas mental health is part of everyone's overall health and well-being, and mental illnesses are prevalent in our city, state, and nation, and since 1949, the month of May has been observed in our country as Mental Health Month. Whereas one in five people may suffer from some form of mental illness, and through education about good mental health resources in our community, we can encourage our citizens to seek help for mental health issues. And whereas even before the pandemic, millions of people were experiencing stress, anxiety, and depression, the pandemic has only exacerbated these conditions, and now are often—more than ever—it is critical to reduce the stigma around mental health struggles because that stigma often prevents individuals from seeking help. Now therefore, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Spokane and recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illnesses, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses. Please say a few words.
Well, thank you very much, first of all, and I'm very pleased to be here on behalf of the Mental Health Task Force to accept this proclamation. And as the proclamation clearly states, mental health is an issue that has been aggravated by the pandemic. And it is unfortunate when we think about not only all of the age groups, but specifically toddlers. We do know that 16% of children over the age of three are already showing signs of anxiety. So I think this is something where public health, healthcare, behavioral health, and mental health are coming together so we can address the issue for all ages or groups as mental health is prevalent in our community. So thank you again. I appreciate the efforts. Thank you very much.
All right, and it's also National Foster Care Month, and Councilmember Oppone is going to read a proclamation, and that's going to be received by Tanisha Thompson from Embrace, Washington. And Tanisha, if you could come on up to the podium.
All right, thank you. Whereas we have a responsibility as individuals, neighbors, and community members to recognize that all children need love, support, security, and a place to call home; and whereas there are nearly 1,000 children experiencing foster care in Spokane, and 450 foster families open their homes to provide a stable nurturing environment; and whereas we must come together as a community to recognize the important role foster parents play in caring for children who have experienced abuse, neglect, or loss, supporting family reunification, and building strong communities. Now therefore, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Foster Care Appreciation Month in Spokane and encourage all citizens to celebrate those who have invited a child in need into their hearts and homes and express our profound appreciation for those who make foster care possible.
First of all, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm not Tanisha. I'm Aline Alexander, and I'm one of the founders of Embrace. And I'd like to thank you very much for this. Every year, you grace us with this proclamation, so we're very, very grateful. And I'd like to say thank you for all the children that we have here in Spokane and the children who are going into care as we speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and we have a special community report this evening. As many of you know, we have several sister cities in Spokane, and one of them is Jecheon from South Korea. And we dedicated new sculptures in the Sister City Garden in Riverfront Park last week. And they were—their delegation was also honorary marshals of the Lilac Parade. And this evening, we're going to have the President of the Spokane Jecheon Sister City Society, Hi Hyong Ji, on, and along with the Deputy Mayor of Jecheon City, Park Ji Soon. And I don't know whoever else in the delegation wants to stand, but please stand and tell us what's going on. Try to use one. But both of you speak into it so the people can hear it on TV.
My name is Hyun Gi An. I am the President of Spokane Jecheon Sister City Association. Thank you for inviting us to speak this evening. Jecheon became Spokane's fourth sister city in 1999. Since then, we have had many exchanges, including mayoral visits to each other's country, children's art exchanges, scholarships for Spokane's college students to study in Korea, college faculty exchanges, screening Korean movies, cooking classes, and many other activities. In recent years, Korea has gathered considerable interest globally because of Korea's economic and cultural prosperity. In Spokane, the Spokane and Jecheon Sister City Association is one of a few venues that provides opportunities to learn about Korea. Last Thursday—you can see in that photo— we celebrated the installation of three Sote Korean traditional artworks in the Sister Cities Garden in Riverfront Park. Sote are Korean village guardians. Traditionally, Koreans believed that Sote played the role of mythical messengers between people and gods. They carried villagers' prayers to deities using their ability to navigate in three realms: land, water, and air. They could swim to the Dragon King in the water, fly to the Heavenly King above the clouds, or walk to the deity on land below. Sote have been guarding village entrances for millennia, preventing evil spirits from entering and protecting villagers from pandemics and natural disasters. Sometimes, they even help the villagers passing examination for high college government positions. Now, I'd like to introduce the Honorable Ki Soon Park, who is Deputy Mayor of the City of Jecheon, and two other officials, Mr. Je Hun Park and Mr. Se Yoon No. And here is Vice Mayor Ki Soon Park.
Hello, my name is Ki Soon Park. I am the Deputy Mayor of the City of Jecheon, Spokane's Korean Sister City. Today, the Jecheon Delegation is very honored to be invited to the Spokane City Council meeting. We thank you for your warm welcome. 相互积极交流， Honorable Council President Brienne Beggs and Councilmen and Women, Spokane and Jecheon formalized a sister city relation in 1999. For the next 20 years, we engaged in active exchanges. 我非常高兴这一点。However, the COVID pandemic temporarily stopped all exchanges. Now, we are renewing our exchanges by our delegation's visit to participate in the Lilac Festival and the Sote Art Dedication in the Sister Cities Garden in Riverfront Park. I believe the purpose of sister city programs is a mutual advancement and development. Jecheon is located in the center of South Korea. Its economy, tourism, and health have steadily developed in great harmony for some time. Now, Jecheon has become a city with the most vibrant economy and tourism in the nation. In addition, it has become one of the leaders among the nation's healthiest cities. The quote "All things work together for good" written in the statement says, "Through the cooperation of both cities, we can achieve harmonious development in all areas, including the economy and culture, by working together." I humbly ask your cooperation for our two cities to achieve mutual development in all areas, including the economy and culture, by working together. 祝愿市长的健康和 Spokane市的繁荣， 谢谢。Once again, I thank you for your welcome. I pray that Spokane prosperes and that our two cities continue to progress. Thank you. 감사합니다.
And Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor, I just wanted to thank you again for traveling all this way and recognizing that both our cities are very beautiful and we are centers of healthcare innovation for the health of our whole community. And whether you're in Jecheon City or in Spokane, we all belong.
感谢来到这里， 我们都是美丽的城市， 我们都是健康的城市， 谢谢。
All right, so we are now turning to open forum. And as I repeat each week, we have rules for open forum. We have up to 15 slots, two minutes each. You can talk about anything related to city business that is not on tonight's agenda. And it's a brief agenda, so you're pretty wide open on that. I'm going to call people up in three at a time, one person to the podium, and then a couple of people waiting for them in the front row. And then the rules that apply to open forum also apply to the testimony on legislative issues. Except for legislative issues, you get up to three minutes. And the timer on both of them will turn yellow when there's one minute left and red when your time is up. And I'll ask you to return to your seat even if you have more to say. Hopefully, you can come back another time. Some of the rules in common for both are that we ask that you direct your comments to the presiding officer, which is myself, and not call out individual council members or really anyone in the audience or in the room. We ask, even though we've been cheering and clapping for people, during this part of the meeting, we don't cheer or clap or boo or make any verbal or auditory sounds that would be disruptive. That includes yelling, pounding on the podium. We don't permit sign waving. We do permit buttons, hats, and T-shirts. We ask that you don't discuss litigation matters between private parties that don't include the city. Also, I'd like to mention that we are here listening to you along with everybody else. We don't typically respond to what you're saying or answer questions. This is your chance to share with us your thoughts. But occasionally, if we have some information that we think would be helpful as a point of information, we may add that. We have far more people signed up for open forum than the 15 slots that we have. And so I am going to call through those while we can see how much time we have. And so the first three people are Elizabeth Gulick and Alicia Spots and Candace Morgan. So Elizabeth, if you could come up, and then Alicia and Candace, you can come up and be ready.
Is the timer?
It's right here. You'll see yellow when there's a minute left, and then red when it's—
Okay. Can I start?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to speak. My name's Elizabeth, and I am part of the community that doesn't want industrial fluoride added to our drinking water and to our entire city water. The last I spoke with you guys, some of you, was at the Virtual Town Hall in 2020. That was such an amazing turnout, and so many people showed up to come out and voice their various reasons why they don't want fluoride added to our water. And as we all know, we have already voted on this issue three times. We've said no three times to this issue. And clearly, it's controversial. So the people who were for the fluoride in our water mostly wanted it for the dental health reasons, which I understand. But I'd like to point out, Delta Dental's own statistic is that community fluoridation only reduces cavities by 25%. So I just want to point out that it's not actually solving anything. I think that's a very key point. To me, it's unethical to add a controversial substance into the community's water against their will, and it causes me a lot of emotional issues because of my beliefs on the matter, which is part of the controversial issue, I understand. Mr. Beggs, your solution was to just filter it out of our drinking and cooking water. And that brings me to my next point. It's very costly. For me, I use a Berkey filter, and if I were to get the attachments for fluoride, that's $120 a year annually. Taking the Delta Dental's initial fluoridation support poll, which said that 34% of our city still strongly opposes fluoridation, that comes out to $8,976,000 that it would cost just to filter the fluoride back out of our water. So I'm asking that you guys take that into consideration as you're doing your cost analysis of what it would take to implement community fluoridation into our water. And that's my time. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Elizabeth. Alicia. And after Alicia is Candace, and then Riker Morgan.
Hello. I'm going to speak regarding scraps. And I'm going to start with talking about our feeling that Dr. O'Keefe, Jesse Ferrari, and Nick Hobbs Doyle cease any and all behavior assessments and behavioral euthanasia recommendations. We feel that they are not qualified to do this. Their lack of dog behavior education and experience is not only causing false assessments for the dogs, but it is extremely dangerous for an inexperienced person to perform this handling. It can place the person in danger of a bite because they are provoking it unknowingly by performing assessment actions and handling dogs when they are not qualified to perform this. It also places the dogs in a situation which a person who does not have an understanding of dog's communication can be compromised. And then I am going to talk a little bit about Nancy, one of the dogs that we spoke about last week. Some notes from Dr. O'Keefe dated back to February 23rd. Dr. O'Keefe notes that Nancy has had soft stools and diarrhea. She states that since she is on multiple feedings a day, this can cause the diarrhea. Fecal samples were sent out, and they were normal. On 4/20/23, Nancy was taken to an emergency vet. Dr. O'Keefe notes that Nancy had been declining in the shelter, and her behavioral quality of life was declining. She states she is more reactive to other dogs and seeking them out, that her pupil dilation and high FAS fear anxiety and stress core has gone up. She is spinning and pacing in the kennel. She also notes she has weight loss and decreased appetite, disassociation with people.
Alicia.
I was listening so closely, I didn't see your time was up.
Thank you.
Council President.
Yeah.
Just a point of personal privilege.
Yeah.
So just to let you know, we did send a letter, Councilwoman Stratton and myself, on Friday, asking them to put a pause on everything until we've had a chance to meet with them personally. And tentatively, we have a meeting set for Thursday, so yes.
All right, next is Candace Morgan, and then Riker Morgan, and Stuart Slinger.
I'm going to be speaking on behalf of scraps as well, so I'm sorry. I was one of the people speaking against scraps. So you guys were sent an email regarding scraps violation with a dog named Amelia, ID number 45785. I'm just going to break down a little bit of her medical information because I'm not going to have enough time to go through all of it just to prove the violation for the council and the public. Amelia's notes by Dr. O'Keefe start in November. November 13th, she has masses or swelling of the mammary area. November 15th, Amelia has mammary masses and she— November 15th, Amelia has mammary masses, and she needs to evaluate and examine her further. November 22nd, she'll be getting her into surgery in the next few weeks for mammary mass removal and spay. December 1st, she drew blood, which was normal, and deems her okay for surgery when they can schedule. She did recommend getting an X-ray if possible. X-rays can be done at any emergency pet care in post falls at no charge. She could have been taken to any vet or emergency to have this completed because there is a budget that does cover the cost. Volunteers typically drive these animals to these visits, so there would have been no constraint on shelter staff other than requesting a driver. December 16th, she started limping, so they started her on remidol or caprofen for 14 days. They're still working on scheduling her X-rays. It's now been mentioned more than two weeks ago, and she's been in the shelter care for over one month with zero progress on the masses. December 20th, she's no longer limping. A community partner contacted, we were contacting them for X-rays, but they have not responded. Furry Farm Rescue was there, has medical space, and was willing to take Amelia as well as get her the medical care that she needed. Who was contacted? Is there proof of this contact? Was every vet, emergency vet, and shelter contacted? Why was she not taken to an emergency vet? Why didn't Furry Farm Rescue take her that day as they were willing to take on her medical? Then we move on to January 27th, which is backdating charting by Dr. O'Keefe. She notes an email was sent to staff about the medical and behavioral issues. There was no behavior issues noted prior to this. So why was Amelia in the shelter for two and a half months after intake?
That's the end of your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Riker, Morgan. Now, if you can get that microphone down to you. Yeah, there you go.
I came here today with my mom to talk about my time at scraps with the dogs. Since Jesse fired my mom as a volunteer, I have been able to, I have been not able to spend time with the dogs that I love so much, and I miss them. It's been hard not seeing some of the dogs that I love and now know, that I love and now know. It's hard not spending time with them and playing ball with, with them. Knowing that some of these dogs are at risk of dying makes me sad, and I want so badly to keep them, to help them get out before it's too late. When I was there, I was able to tell people coming in which dogs were good with kids. Some of the behavior dogs, even some of the behavior dogs, I would give treats to, treats to them and ha, treats, treats to them and have them sit for me. Just because I couldn't walk the dogs doesn't mean I didn't help. I used to fill up their treat buckets and get them fresh water and pick up poop in their kennels so they did not have to sit in it all night. I just want you to know that every dog deserves a second chance and every, and even though some of them might need a little extra love, because that doesn't change everything. So anything, because that, because love changes everything. So will you stand with me in saving my friends and giving them a second chance? Thank you.
Thanks, Riker. Stuart Slinger, and then Janelle Simpson, and then Eugene Knowles. Welcome to City Council. You have three minutes, or two minutes.
Council President Beggs and the rest of you councilmen, thank you for this opportunity to speak on something that I feel very strongly about. I'm speaking about fluoride and fluorine that's being put in the water. For 20 years, I was a fireman in Medical Lake, and we used foam which had fluorines and fluorides in them. After 20 years, I retired as a captain, and now it has come out of what the fluorines and fluorides were doing that I was using. We used foam fire retardant in training and in fighting fires. We were assured that there was no problem. It was very safe to use, even for the environment, and even though it contained fluoride. I never was instructed on how to dispose of it or how to clean it up or anything like that. It was considered to be safe to go into the soil. Fairchild Air Force Base was doing the same thing. As people nearby started getting sick, fluoride started being investigated. A very good friend of ours named Millie Holler lived about a half mile from the Fairchild Air Force Base. She was starting to become very sick, and they investigated her water and found it contained the same foam that was being used for putting out fires and contained fluoride. After the Fairchild finally admitted that they did have a problem, they started supplying her with water, and after a couple of months, she died of cancer. Fluorine is found in many things that were around, from air conditioning systems to industrial chemicals. It's all contains fluoride and fluorine, and it's all additive in your bones and your teeth. People react differently. I hate to think that my innocent use may have caused someone's death. Stop using this. I appreciate your time, and I relinquish any extra time to the next speaker.
Thanks so much, Stuart. All right, Janelle Simpson, come on up.
Hi, thank you for your time, all of you councilmen. I'm speaking on the fluoride as well. In consideration of the risk of fluoridation in public water source, I'm urging you to back away from fluoridating the city of Spokane's water supply. Fluoridated water has been linked with such adverse health events as skeletal fluorosis, thyroid dysfunction, neurological issues including seizures and ADHD, acne and other skin problems, cardiovascular issues including arteriosclerosis and arterial calcification, high blood pressure, myocardial damage, cardiac insufficiency, and heart failure. Reproductive issues such as lower fertility and early puberty in girls. Bone and joint disorders such as osteoarthritis, bone cancer, and TMJ and calcium depletion. In 2014, fluoride was documented as a neurotoxin that could be hazardous to children's development. Please do the right thing. No fluoridated water for the city of Spokane. If you won't consider these adverse effects as potential harms, harm for the citizens of Spokane, then you might consider your own role if you force this toxic program on the city of Spokane with the known potential side effects. Friends and neighbors, if you're watching, contact each of these city council members to tell them resoundingly no to fluoride. I do have a source if any of you want it, and I'll leave you with two words. Nuremberg Code.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Eugene Knowles, and then Debbie Novak, and then Justin Haller.
Okay. Name Eugene, Eugene Knowles. It's a pleasure to be here. I recognize a couple of the council members here. The topic that I wanted to speak on was the homeless situation. I'm a homeless advocate, not a homeless activist, a homeless advocate. I just make a couple of comments about my qualifications to speak on this. I was in the construction business for 44 years, and from 2007 to 2017, I was homeless. So those two things are going to be the point of the two problems that I saw. A lot of people come up and say, I'm nervous. I'm not nervous, I'm flummoxed. The first time I was flummoxed was when they had the convention center, and they brought in 200 homeless people, and they paid $40,000, $400,000. And then after they left there a couple of weeks, they, $40,000 to do repairs. Okay, I said, geez, I'm a construction worker. Any construction, retired construction workers in here? Anybody homeless in here? Okay, so these two qualifications let you know that something's up. The thing that blew me away was I read in the end of it, I'm getting ready to run out of time, was $1,400,000 for plumbing? I'm addressing the city of Spokane. Somebody's getting goose.
Thank you, Eugene, for coming down. Debbie Novak, good to see you, Debbie. And then after Debbie, Justin.
I don't really understand, do I get two minutes?
You get two minutes. Yeah.
I think I qualify for the three minutes.
Well, many people do, but.
Hello, Council President Beggs and council members. I'm Debbie Novak, and I'm speaking as an impacted family member with the Washington Coalition for Police Accountability. Debbie, could you pull that microphone down a little closer? There we go. Is that better? Yeah. I wanted to speak to you about an article that was in the Spokesman Review on the 23rd of April, and it was in regards to the SER team and releasing information. And Chief Midell and Spokane County Sheriff Knowles are saying that the agency that used force is completely cut off from information about the incident as soon as the independent investigation team takes over. This simply is not true, and I want to make sure that you all understand that. I have thoroughly researched this. They are not completely cut off. If you look at the SER team protocol and WAC 139 and WASPIC, their own training packet for Initiative 940, and I quote, "No information about the ongoing independent investigation will be shared with any member of the involved agency except limited briefings given to the chief or sheriff of the involved agency about the progress of the investigation so that they can manage the internal administrative investigation and communicate with their community about the progress of the investigation." The other thing is they talk about until the investigation is completed. Again, I've, I've researched this, and I've got several sources that I could quote, but an investigation is considered completed when it's delivered to the prosecuting attorney. So what Spokane is doing is after it's delivered, for instance, to Larry Haskell, it sits on his desk for months, and then they release the information. That's not the way that the law reads. The law reads that the investigation is considered completed once it's delivered to the prosecuting attorney.
Debbie, thanks for your time, and feel free to email us with more things.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Justin Haller, and then after Justin is Scott Ward, and then Rick Boeck.
Hi, my name's Justin Haller. I identify as Ron Swanson. That's my pronoun. I'm very frustrated with the, the city, construction trucks, and private vehicles in bike lanes. I don't know why you guys build bike lanes when you don't enforce where city trucks, Cameron O'Reilly trucks, musicians can park. And especially when I'm told that I need to get away from my single-use car and bike and take public transportation everywhere, when you guys don't have that experience, at least based on results, I don't see it. And it's just, it's just very frustrating to see that the bike lanes aren't swept like the car lanes are swept. Copious amounts of flats on Crestline and Illinois, and the Illinois project was a complete fiasco because you have to come to a complete grinding halt to go north from the Illinois Street Project. No one who rode a bike thought of that in the way they built it. And it's very frustrating to ride a bicycle in this town as a result of all these vehicles in the way. And I don't feel safe parking here because my friend's bike was stolen at and during a city council meeting, and I think it's offensive that this guy Spencer, whoever he is with his orange cargo bike, gets to lock his bike up away from the fray where his bike won't get stolen. Maybe that's just a city privilege. But I'd like to see some of these people who tell me to ride my bike everywhere, and I ride my bike at least 5,000 miles a year. I'd like to see the people who tell me to ride my bike park outside, park out front where their bike is going to get stolen, and the city council or the SPD can't do their job and investigate property crime because they were neutered, and you're not allowed to, that and no fluoride. Thanks.
Thanks for coming down, Justin. Scott Ward, and then Rick Boeck, and then Zach McGuckin.
Hi, I'm Scott Ward, and I'm from Spokane Valley. First, I just want to encourage you all to extend open forum beyond the 15 people, especially in a city this large. If more people are signed up, I think it'd be great for everybody to be able to speak. As a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation, I want to acknowledge that the indigenous people of this land should have full sovereignty over their ancestral territory, including the city of Spokane. Secondly, I'd like to call on the city to ensure that a robust heat policy is ready to go to ensure that all community members have access to cool shelter and water as the weather is heating up earlier than usual. In 2021, we lost 20 people to heat-related deaths in this community, and we should make it our goal that no one in our community suffers this summer. We need to make sure that shelter and water are easily accessible for our most vulnerable people. Lastly, I'm calling on this council to join the over 80 city and state legislatures calling on President Biden to end the blockade and sanctions against Cuba and remove them from the state sponsor of terrorism list. According to declassified government documents, these brutal policies are meant to cause Cuban people immense suffering, including food and medical shortages, so that the Cuban people decide to take the path of counterrevolution and regime change. This policy is barbaric, illegal, and a violation of Cuba sovereignty. We can't allow ourselves to be complicit in this slow torture of innocent working-class Cuban people. Every year, the United Nations votes almost unanimously to condemn the US embargo of Cuba with only the US and Israel voting against. These policies also hurt US farmers by restricting access to markets and hurt all Americans by blocking access to a lung cancer vaccine and other cutting-edge medical advancements that Cuba has created. Please pass a resolution to demand an end to these violent and senseless policies. Cuba is a peaceful and humanitarian nation, not a threat. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Scott. Rick Boeck, and then Zach McGuckin, and then Dennis Flynn.
Greetings. I'm going to bring up a comparison. Sunday was trying to catch the bus by the jail, and there's this guy out there, he's all wound up. He's smoking, he's probably smoking a mixture of fentanyl and crystal, and he's got the foil in his hand. And I get on the bus, and I tell the bus driver, don't let him on. The bus driver lets him on. He's got the foil in his hand, right there, in front of, flashing it in front of the bus driver. He let him on. Well, the guy, I guess the guy was going to call the supervisor. So he leans up against the bus like this, and he starts nodding. Then he wakes up, asks this guy to give him change for $20 bill. Lucky he didn't have no change. Supervisor comes there, tells him to get off the bus, still got the foil in his hand. And he spits at the bus. I bring this issue up because I want to go back to the comparison. We got the STA Plaza regulating people in the bathrooms, one at a time, basically profiling them to be a potential drug addict, and yet here's a bus driver that allows somebody that is blatantly showing that they're doing the drug. So I have issues with that. Now, the bus drivers, they're not sure where they stand. I wouldn't go and turn the bus driver in because he says, he didn't know what to do. And this is an example of how we have this miscommunication and bias, and people that are elderly and disabled people are still being punished and being basically profiled as a potential drug user. Because when they go into the restroom, the security, after they, he goes in there and makes sure that they didn't do any drugs. That's what that security guy is doing. So then I say, okay, so people talk about the foil. I says, well, they're not sure about that. And I says, well, what if it was a knife? What if somebody's holding a knife? Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Zach McGuckin, and then Dennis Flynn, and then Sherry Burnett.
Hello, my name's Zachary McGuckin. I'm with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I use he/him pronouns. And I also want to encourage city council to continue the open forum so that everyone can speak. I think it's important that everyone's voices get heard. And I want to speak about some of this new, these new policies furthering criminalization for things. You can't really understand these policies furthering criminalization unless you take it into the context of a new jail opening up in this county. In order to justify a new jail, we need to have crimes to fill it. If we make things that are happening more severe crimes, we can have our crime statistics going up. This is referring to the public drug use policy that was recently passed, although I believe it was countered by the state, and also this upcoming policy about being in the park after dark. It's a public jail, so it's not a private prison, but in every jail, there's money to be made through construction, selling food, furniture, all these things to the jail. People are making money off of this jail, and we need higher crimes to justify being built. And I wonder how many of those people And I wonder how many of those people who stand to profit from the jail are donating to our mayor's reelection campaign, donating to members of this city council's reelection campaign? And so I think we need to end all these policies that are further criminalizing things and say no to this new jail. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Zach. And Dennis Flynn, welcome. You have up to two minutes, and then Sherry Barnett, and then Anton Valon.
Dennis Flynn, live up near St. Charles. Wouldn't want to deprive you of two weeks in a row without any poetry, so I'll give you the best one I've ever been inspired to have. Trials and tribulations of eons gone by make today seem but the blink of an eye. The sun shines splendidly bright, but inevitably follows the night. Falling rain cleanses the path of today; dawn breaks in a perpetual way, such as the way of the Lord our God sweeping away the trials we have trod. So there's your poetry. Regarding resources and choices I talked about before, one of the things that we have had a choice on in the not-too-distant past was going to every other week, collection of recycling bins. And when I called the city to ask about that, I was surprised to learn just how little actually is recycled of what is put in those bins and how much just gets burned with our trash. And then I asked about when I would expect to see my bill go down, since the recycling part was going, being cut in half on both labor and vehicle expense, and I was told not to expect any decreases in my bill. So I'm assuming, in the context of resources and choices, why did a choice to reduce services to us customers not include a reduction in the resources we pay? This must mean either the refuse services were running in the red previously, or they're now running in the black, and they have excess resources that, you know, you're probably allocating elsewhere. And in the end, regarding recycling, I'd ask you to consider if it actually wouldn't be better to just eliminate the recycling trucks completely and educate the public as to what is recyclable and what isn't, and just gets burned up anyway, and ask us to do our part and separate our own refuse and deliver it to recycling centers on our own. Getting back to resources and choices, with the budget input sessions coming up, and this is my final point, I'd like you to ask, when have we actually cut? And I don't mean limit below the increase of inflation, but I mean cut any individual program or department budget. If the answer isn't, we find some unnecessary or inefficient thing to cut every budget cycle, then I propose reassessing the choices that you make concerning our resources.
Thanks, Dennis. Sherry Barnett, and after Sherry is Anton Valon.
Yes, I'm Sherry Barnett, and I live in Spokane. President Beggs and all members of the city council, I thank you for the chance to do this. I'm going to divert again because I was at the veterans home. I worked there. We had a number of veterans from Korean War. The Korean people wanted, before they passed away, they wanted to come and say thankful. They gave them medals, they came in their full regalia, they hugged them. I have never seen such a thankful group, and I knew them in San Diego as well. They were enthusiastic, worked two jobs, thanked God all the time that they were in the United States of America. So just a kudo to the Korean people for such a thankfulness in their hearts. But going on, I was talking about things that we might not be on the right track about. And I believe one of the things that we're not on the right track about is the sexualization, and this is from the United Nations perspective, that our children are sexual beings. And in the school books, even in the recruiting in the military, they've got a very woke agenda. So they're not working so hard on getting the very best fighting men that they can. They're working on promoting a woke agenda, and it's causing them not to be able to recruit the people that want to protect our nation. The other thing, I think we were built, yes, we accept other religions without persecution, but we were built on Christian principles. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming down. Anton Valon, our 15th speaker.
Hi, my name is Anton. I'd just like to thank you guys, and I sympathize with all the stuff that you guys have to sit here and listen. What I'd like to say is that we need to think about programs with people that are on drugs that are addicted, rather than, you know, like putting all the, or expect the police department to do all that. You know, it's kind of like nonsense. Maybe if we think about creating programs and giving the drug addicts, you know, maybe there's a reason they're like that, and, you know, they might want to quit, you know? Something to think about, you know? And rather than, rather than creating an enemy, we need to get along, you know? We need to work together, you know, understanding among ourselves, our communities, and our states, and maybe a lot of the complaints that people make is because we have a bad apple in that department, and we need to look at those people. Not everybody is bad, but there are individuals that corrupt, that make it bad for the others, like with fluoride. I'm with the people that are against the fluoride. Don't pass it, you know? And the same thing with the animal treatment, you know? Considerate, you know, they're animals. There's a soul in there, you know? They're not just animals, you know? If you relate to them, you can understand them. And people that own animals, pets, they know that. Yeah. Okay, I just want to say that. Thank you. Yeah.
Thanks for coming down. Those are the 15 speakers. That brings us to the consent agenda.
Council President, can we take number one separately?
Yes. And while we're at it, I believe there was a new version of the 2023 Annual Action Plan circulated after Nicolette Akkletrimet with Jen Saracides in item two. Is there a motion to substitute that version?
So move substitution.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of substituting indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? Any abstentions? All right, that's substituted. If you could read, starting with two, and then we'll take number one separately afterwards.
Item number two, 2023 Annual Action Plan Component of the 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan for Community Development Program, as required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Item number three is deferred to June 5, 2023 Agenda. Item number four, low bid of inland asphalt company Spokane Valley, Washington for 2023 Residential Grind and Overlay Project, $1,152,521. An administrative reserve of $115,252.10, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside. Number five, low bid of inland asphalt company Spokane Valley, Washington for 2023 Paving Unpaved Streets Project, $676,980. An administrative reserve of $67,698, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside. Various neighborhoods. Number six, multiple family housing property tax exemption conditional agreements with A, Washington Estate Services LLC for the future construction of approximately 52 units at parcel number 36283.0406, commonly known as 1911 East Lyons Avenue. B, Ryan Towner for the future construction of approximately 30 units at parcel number 35194.2512, commonly known as 206 West 8th Avenue. The conditional agreements will ultimately result in the issuance of final certificates of tax exemption to be filed with the Spokane County Assessors Office post-construction. Number seven, report of the mayor pending eight claims and payments to previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through May 12, 2023. Total $3,854,345.24, with Parks and Library claims approved by respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $3,316,560.28. B payroll claims of previously approved obligations through May 13, 2023, $8,864,748.52. Number eight, city council meeting minutes for May 4, May 8, and May 18, 2023.
All those in favor of consent items two and four through eight, as read, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? Any abstentions? All right, those items are passed. And then if you could read item number one.
Number one, purchase from Contract Design Associates Spokane of desks and cubicle walls for the Community Housing and Human Services Department utilizing the Omni Partners Contract number 220000622, $113,856.83.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no?
No.
Any abstentions? And Councilmember Bingle, did you have a vote on that?
Aye.
Okay. All right, that passes as well. And Councilmember Kinnear has a point of personal privilege.
I do. As I was listening to open forum, and the young man came up, Riker came up and spoke, and it really moved us. And I want to thank you, that took a lot of courage for you to do that, and I want to thank you for coming tonight and speaking. And we don't have to wait for you to grow up to do great things. I think you're already doing them, and so I want to say thank you, and thank you to your parents for raising such a fine young man. So thank you.
We're not --
We're going to break the rule.
All right.
We're going to break the rule.
Anarchy, anarchy. Good job, Riker. All right. And now I would like to invite up our Chief Financial Officer, Tanya Wallace, to introduce us to the mayor's nominated new risk manager for the city of Spokane, Scott, excuse me, John Scott.
Would you like me to read it first?
Go ahead.
Okay. Resolution 2023-38, appointing John Scott Jordan as risk manager for the city of Spokane.
Thank you, councilmembers. I've brought this forward to you in committee and briefed to you last week as well, but I want to personally introduce Mr. Scott to you as the city's new director of risk management. So with that, let me introduce Scott, and if you have any questions or comments, he's here for you to see and meet. So thank you, councilmembers.
Well, you traveled all the way, so say a few words, make it worth your while.
Thank you, President Beggs and other councilpeople. I'm excited to get started at the job. I've been doing this for about 28 years, all in the state of Alaska, and I look forward to taking, using that experience for the city of Spokane.
Fantastic. Any questions from anyone?
Really, Alaska?
Yeah.
From Alaska to Spokane? Wow.
Yes, ma'am. I was born and raised in Juneau, and I've never lived anywhere else, and we wanted to have summers with sun, so.
That makes sense. That makes sense.
We have mostly rain up there, so yeah.
Welcome, and thank you. Thank you for being willing to do the work and move all the way here.
Thank you, yes.
During your interview process, what is one thing you think you can effectively help us change with our risk management program?
That's a great question, and I, you know, there was a lot of things that came out that I thought I could help, but one of the things in talking to Tanya today is there has not been someone in this position that has pulled it all together. In other words, all of the, all of the risk management, safety training, making sure you have the right insurance, or possibly even being self-insured if that's the right way to go, and making sure you have good indemnity language in your contracts, things like that. There hasn't been any one person that's kind of overseeing that effort, so I think that's probably one of the things I'll focus on, as well as hopefully, after looking through the claims, see if there's something that we can do or I can do to help lower those claims. Absolutely.
I just want to echo that. That's the thing I'm most excited about. You are very qualified and all that, I'm excited about that, but I'm really excited and I really want to commend Tanya for having the vision and talking the rest of the administration into having a dedicated risk manager. Before I was on city council, I used to sue the city quite regularly, and the risk manager was really the attorney who was defending it instead of the risk manager, which was a huge conflict of interest and made, was really problematic. And then since then, we've had other people. We've just pressed them into service, all good people, all smart, but they have another full-time job, and they're just asked to be the risk manager. So I am super excited to have you and your expertise and your dedication to it, and so please jump in and then don't hesitate to come back to us and say, "This is what needs to happen," and I'm fully expecting that there will be a lot. So thank you.
Thank you.
With that, prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right. Passes seven to zero, and we have one more resolution for tonight, and then a final reading, I mean a first reading.
Resolution 2023-39, approving a second amendment of a development agreement regarding the preliminary plat and planned unit development referred to as Beacon Hill.
All right, there's no public comment requested on this. This was briefed last week, and there's different portions of this area, and this is just giving more time to build more housing, so it's pretty exciting. Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart?
I'll just say, we're just so close to having this project get over the finish line, so really excited to see it come to fruition.
Yeah. Councilmember Bingle, I'll ask your vote first.
Aye.
All right. Everyone else, prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero, and that brings us to first reading ordinances.
Ordinance C 36387 relating to minimum parking spaces required in bicycle parking amending Spokane municipal code, section 17C.230.110 and 17C.230.200. Further action is deferred in the first reading ordinance.
All right. We have two people who would like to testify about that. First is Dennis Flynn, followed by Will Heelings.
Hi, Dennis Flynn, live up by St. Charles. Really don't have any thing to say about whether or not I support or oppose this. The ordinance says it will, quote, "promote active transportation ridership, leading to less reliance on personal motor vehicles, which can relieve congestion on roadways, decrease greenhouse gas emissions, and promote a more active pedestrian street network." It also says, quote, "Increase the viability of compact walkable neighborhoods, which promote higher-density housing that can assist in combating the current housing shortage." Sounds good. How to tell if it does that? It says, quote, "Shared mobility trip origin and destination data can be retrieved or reviewed to assess changes in trip patterns." But then it talks about, will anyone collect the data to determine the effectiveness in achieving these things? And it says N/A. So resources and choices, was it a good choice? I don't know. Like I said, I don't know if this is a good thing or a bad thing, but I guess I'd ask, is there any report out on how effective changing Indiana from four lanes to two was? Is there any follow-up on, on some of the bike lanes going in to determine if it actually did decrease transportation using gas-powered vehicles, or are we just changing roads for really no good reason and people spending time writing ordinances for no follow-up? Thanks.
Thanks for coming down, Dennis. And do we? Welcome, Will. You have up to three minutes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Will Heelings. I live downtown. I'm not sure what to think of this. As someone that rides year-round, like, 365, and I live downtown, I know for a fact that a lot of my friends and even myself would not come downtown, first of all, because it's with my bike, because first off, it's very unsafe. So you want to promote people to come downtown and ride around, but it's so dangerous. I mean, I can think of when I went to SCC as a student, and they tried stealing my bike twice. So the same thing that happened, I got very mad about it, and I went to student government, and I got the school, SCC, to spend $30,000 on bicycle lockers. Now, if you go over there, you can lock your bicycle up. That's because of me. Downtown, you spend millions of dollars on the park and bicycle lanes, but there's nowhere to park your bike, because there's a lot of people downtown that will take things off your bike or try to steal your bike, because that's how they support their habits. And so, I mean, I'm all for this, I mean, stuff that involves bicycling, but just, you guys maybe want to think, maybe the Parks Department may want to think about, maybe guys maybe want to think, maybe the parks department may want to think about maybe making it more safe for people, maybe in Riverfront Park, you know, put some bicycle lock. But then the problem you'll have is you'll have people wanting to store their stuff in the lockers, and that's something that happens at SCC. So, but yeah, I'm all for anything bicycle-related, but I think you guys need to think a little bit more clearly on things, so thank you.
Thanks for coming down. That brings us to the end of our meeting. We don't have a meeting next Monday. It's Memorial Day. I hope you will be able to enjoy that with family and friends and honor the people that we've lost in the past. We'll be back on June 5 with our Public Safety Committee briefing at 3:30 in our legislative session. Thanks, everyone, for participating. Thanks for staff. Thanks for our officers for being here with us. Please take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of someone else. And Betsy, Councilmember Wilkerson is going to give a recap, so if we could head out and have conversations out in the Chase Gallery with the new art exhibit. We adjourned.